Broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Sarah Pentecost with APA Virginia staff. Thank you for joining us for our monthly webinar series, Your Hour with APA Virginia Chapter sponsored by the Berkeley Group. We have a lot of people joining us today, so thank you for giving us your lunch hour. This webinar is eligible for one CM credit and it's a legal credit. So make sure that you log that information. You can find that on virginia-planning.org. And then watch your inboxes after this webinar. I will send a follow-up email with the CM credit information and with the presenter's information today. That way you can contact them with any follow-up questions. And if you look under the handouts tab, you'll see two attachments that go along with the presentation today. So feel free to look at those. Andrew and Chris will take questions at the end, so feel free to type questions in the questions tab as we go along, and we will get to those in the last five to 10 minutes of the webinar today. Before we get started, I'll add a few announcements from the chapter. For those of you going to the National Planning Conference in San Francisco next month, be on the lookout for the Southeast Region Reception. It's hosted by the Virginia Chapter this year, and it will be Monday night, April 15th. So we hope to connect with you there. That information should be on the NPC schedule sometime this week. So be sure to check back. And then switching gears to the State Planning Conference. Registration for resilience opens next Monday, April 1st, at apavirginia.com. And we are excited to release some programmatic details this week like mobile tours and some keynote speakers. The room block for the Embassy Suites by the Hampton Roads Convention Center will also open next Monday. So prepare for that. Early bird rates for the conference will be available until June. And this year's conference is July 21st through the 24th at the Hampton Roads Convention Center. For those who just joined us, thank you for joining us for the monthly webinar series, Your Hour with APA Virginia Chapter sponsored by the Berkeley Group. For those that share this with your colleagues and help spread the word about our series, we're very grateful to see this grow. These are currently open to anyone regardless of APA membership status, so if you're joining us from outside of Virginia, welcome, and we're happy to have you. These are the fourth Monday of each month from noon to one covering many topics in the planning field. Like I said, the CM credit is available on virginia-planning.org, and I will send a follow-up email about this specific webinar. Also, many of our past webinars are now available for on-demand education. So if you go to our YouTube channel, it's APA Virginia, you can find in the comment sections of the video information on how to log the webinar. So it's not going to be the webinar or the CM information from when it was live, but there's totally different CM ID for logging these on-demand credits. And that's a really awesome new professional development opportunity we have for APA members. If you have any questions, please contact Andrew Hopewell, who was our Professional Development Officer. And please mark your calendars for next month's webinar on April 22nd with Jonathan Neuf of the Manufactured Home Community Coalition of Virginia. This webinar will provide a brief history of mobile home parks, describe their current status in Virginia, and give an overview of the challenges they face. It will also feature examples of communities in the state and across the nation who are creating out-of-the-box solutions to equitably preserve parks rather than try and make them disappear. So for those of you who have an interest in affordable housing, the manufactured housing industry, this webinar is for you, and there will be one CM credit available. So coming back to today, we're excited to have two local government attorneys, Andrew McRoberts and Chris McKenzie with Sands Anderson PC. Andrew offers specialized counsel, outside counsel for local governments and officials across Virginia. A member of the firm's government group, Andrew is a longtime litigator and Virginia Local Government Attorney. He brings in-depth knowledge and inventiveness with helping his clients navigate complex litigation and issues in local government. Andrew has helped many local governments and officials, as well as select non-government entities, resolve their unique legal needs, achieve their specific goals, and come out ahead. Chris offers a congenial interest in guiding Virginia local businesses to thrive. He focuses his practice on real estate, business formation and operations, and civil litigation. Chris assists a range of clients with their real estate and business needs, including commercial real estate developers, localities, community associations, and retail businesses. He also offers a depth of experience handling organizational, transactional, and protection issues for local business owners. He can assist with setting up your new corporate structure, drafting your organizational documents, and protecting your intellectual property. He can also serve as an ally in negotiating contracts or defending against breach of contract claims. So we've got two experts here. I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to them so we can get started today. Like I said, if you have any questions, feel free to type them in the box as we go along, and we will get to them at the end of the webinar today.
Thank you, Sarah. I appreciate it. I'm glad all of you all are here. My name's Andrew McRoberts. I'm here with Chris McKenzie. We have the distinct honor of being the attorneys that lost this case after having won it every other stage until we got there. But in any event, so we bring a little bit of unique perspective, as well as some of the background facts and documents that you all may have an interest. Some of you all may have read the case. It's attached to the materials there to read, but not in the case opinion are some of the pictures, the documents, and some other things, although they may be described. First, before we start, a little bit about Sands Anderson. Sands Anderson is a full-service law firm, serving all sorts of different businesses, governments, entities. But we have one of the largest government group of attorneys that emphasize local government law in the state. I think we're probably third after like the AG's office, you know, Virginia Beach, Fairfax, places like that. We have the most local government lawyers on the team here. We have offices in McLean in Northern Virginia, Fredericksburg in Richmond, in Christiansburg in Southwest Virginia, and then also in Raleigh, which serves Southern Virginia as well as North Carolina. We represent local governments across the state. We are county, city, or town attorney in 10, 12 places now. We are school district council in I think about 25 different school districts now. We handle litigation, you know, everywhere across the state, and we'd be glad to help your locality if and when it's needed. Now, on to the Rhodes case. First, a little background. We serve as county attorney in Richmond County, so we were sort of involved from the very beginning to the very end of this. When we first got involved in this, the approval of the two-story garage in question had already been approved. In fact, the garage had already been built. And the zoning administrator had looked into it and determined that they probably had been a mistake made. And we'll go into a little detail about what that mistake was. We looked at it and said, yes, it is a mistake. There's certainly no reading of the zoning ordinance that would allow this two-story garage, given the language in the ordinance, which only allowed in that particular residential zoning district accessory structures as tall as the principal structure. And in this particular case, there was a one-story ranch home. There was a bungalow. It was a, you know, river house, vacation home, if you will. And so, under the law, all they could really build is a garage or an accessory building as tall as the house. And because of a series of unfortunate events, the zoning administrator did not realize that the project had morphed from a one-story garage to a two-story garage and did not read the actual zoning application itself and the zoning permit and approved it without reading it. So the first lesson to be learned is read the zoning permits, read the applications, make sure you are pulling the trigger on the right project. What had happened is they, the Rhodes had applied for a zoning certificate of compliance for this two-story unfinished detached garage. Zoning administrator had visited the property previously and had chatted with them about what was allowed. At that time, they were discussing a one-story garage, and so he said, sure, of course you can build a garage. And then he turned it over to his environmental code enforcement staff member, who dealt with things like setbacks required by the Chesapeake Bay Act, for example, or setbacks under the zoning ordinance, et cetera, and didn't really deal with use. That wasn't his job. His job, you know, as this county administrator described to me one time, his job was everything to do with dirt and water. And so, but while he was there onsite one time talking about setbacks, you know, one of the Rhodes family was there and said, well, our real problem is we, you know, are really going to be constrained by these setbacks, you know, gosh, that's a real problem for us. And then the environmental code enforcement guy said, well, maybe you can just build it taller. Well, his job wasn't to talk about height limitations. His job wasn't to talk about height at all, but he in fact mentioned that. Thereafter, the Rhodes took him up on the offer, decided to design a two-story garage, which they then submitted for approval. The zoning administrator, having already been involved in the process previously and thought it was a one-story garage, he made a quick inquiry to the environmental guy and said, hey, is there any problem with setbacks, environmental Chesapeake Bay Act issues? He said, nope, it's good to go. So at that point, he took out his pen and he signed it without reading the entire application for a building permit, which is now, should be on your screen. The, is there more pages of this?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it plainly is an accessory structure. It was applied for, the applicant has signed, and, you know, it plainly says, all finished detached garage, two-story, on the face of it. So if the zoning administrator had read it, he plainly would have known that this is something that was not allowed by the property because he, by the zoning ordinance, because he had already been there, and he knew that it was a bungalow, a one-story ranch home, and so therefore, a two-story would not be allowed.
But that was, this is Chris McKenzie, that was an issue in the case because one of the important facts for their position under 2311(c) was that the county administrator, zoning administrator, who at the time was the same person, knew that the primary dwelling was one-story. But this document, the application itself, on its face, doesn't include that information. So someone without personal knowledge of the property wouldn't have enough information from this application to know that a violation of the zoning ordinance would result, because it doesn't say anything about the height of the primary dwelling. And under the zoning ordinance, the violation only occurs relative to the primary dwelling. In other words, the zoning ordinance says accessory can't exceed the height of the primary dwelling. So one of the arguments that we went through with the court in this case was, you know, setting aside what the zoning administrator personally knows, because that is an incredibly slippery slope to go down to determine what is in your personal bank of knowledge, this document itself doesn't state a violation of the zoning or ordinance. Conversely, if you want to talk about what the zoning administrator personally knows, what he knew when he approved this was, it's a primary dwelling, and in his mind, the garage was still one-story. So the way this shook out unfortunately was, the court borrowed from both kind of realms of knowledge. They say, well, he personally knows this one story, but the application says that it's two stories. We're going to combine those two kind of bodies of knowledge to say, this thing states a zoning violation together.
Even though he had not read it and didn't know what its content was. The, what happened then is after the garage went up, there were neighbors who were impacted. Can you pull up the photograph?
Sure.
As you can see, it's a fairly tall, two-full-story building on a fairly tight site. It's right next to the property line, and it, and it really towered over the neighbor's yard. And the neighbors also had a one-story bungalow, you know, waterfront river home, and they complained to the zoning administrator that it towered over their property illegally. And, you know, it was looked into, and sure enough, it violated the zoning ordinance. And the question was, you know, well, you know, does 2311(c) prevent me from changing it? As county attorney, we looked into it, and we said, well, you know, maybe, but maybe not. In fact, our position at the time was that because the decision was given in such plain violation of the zoning ordinance, in fact, the Rhodes family never took the position that the zoning ordinance wasn't clear, or it needed interpretation, or that it didn't plainly prohibit this structure. They said, yes, it violates the structure, it violates the zoning ordinance, but, you know, 2311(c) allows it.
There's the language right there at the top of your screen, accessory structures not to exceed the height of primary structures.
Yeah, so that's the language in the code. Do you have the photographs of the garage? There it is. As you can see, it's, it's, it's right there next to the property line. That's actually the neighbor's house there tucked in behind there, and that's the neighbor's accessory building right there. And the property line is right there between the two. It towers over their structure and their yard, and the neighbors had a rightful complaint about it. And so that's one of the interesting things about this case is not just the application of 2311(c), but a serious policy issue as to where does a property owner's vested right begin, and where does the neighbor's right to have the law enforced, you know, evenly across the board and as written, especially given the fact that neighbors had no notice whatsoever of this. As you can see, it's very close to the property line, very close to the neighbors. In any event, at that point in time, a new zoning administrator had been hired. The zoning administrator wrote a notice of violation letter to the Rhodes. The Rhodes appealed that to the BZA. The BZA considered both sides' arguments, the 2311(c) argument, also considered, you know, the county's position that it was void ab initio, and so therefore, it wasn't order requirement, decision termination, et cetera. And the BZA actually affirmed the notice of violation. The Rhodes then appealed that to the circuit court as permitted by law, and in circuit court, a lot of the facts were stipulated to. As a matter of fact, we took the position at the time that there are very few facts to dispute. It really came down to what does 2311(c) mean? And so a lot of the facts were stipulated, a lot of the exhibits were stipulated, and it was a fairly straightforward, about a half-day trial to hear from, you know, one of the Rhodes family, to hear from the zoning administrator himself, and to get a few other documents in, and to have legal argument. The trial judge initially ruled in favor of the county and affirmed the BZA and found that, that it wasn't a valid approval, and relied very heavily upon some older case law that had addressed 2311(c) and 2307 vested right in doing so, the DeGoyanaga case. At that point in time, before the entry of the final order, the Rhodes asked for reconsideration. They engaged new counsel and asked for reconsideration. There was a bunch of briefing, and then there was another oral argument. After that, the judge issued a letter opinion in which he reversed himself and said, in my opinion, I believe 2311(c) covers this scenario, and therefore, the zoning administrator should be stopped. That didn't terribly surprise me. What did surprise me is he went on and, without really even addressing the issue of whether or not 2311(c) estoppel covers a governing body, which is a public body not named, at 2311(c), he went on and said, it covers them too, and issued an order in both cases and reversed the BZA in both. We appealed on behalf of the Richmond County Board of Supervisors to the Supreme Court, and at that point in time, you know, there was of course the briefing and then the oral argument. At the Supreme Court, there were three major issues, which are on, I guess, the top of page four of your materials. And the first one was whether 2311(c) did not apply because the zoning administrator lacked the authority to approve what was a plain and admitted violation of the zoning ordinance, and that the certificate he issued was therefore void ab initio. Now, recognize the fact that the void ab initio doctrine has a long and storied history in Virginia. It is even today applied by the Supreme Court in various circumstances. You may be familiar with the EMAC versus Hanover County decision from about a year or so ago, and the Supreme Court relied upon Dick Kelly Enterprises and void ab initio in part to make the decision in that case. We pointed to that and said, well, Supreme Court void ab initio means that there is no valid order requirement decision termination here. The first requirement of the three that are in the statute are that there be an order requirement decision termination. If the zoning administrator has no authority by a long, well-settled law, Dick Kelly, WANV versus Hoff, Segalaw versus Newport News, all of those cases, it's clear that without something having valid authority, then it is void, and if it's void, it never happened. And if it never happened, then there's no order requirement decision termination, and the analysis ends there. The Supreme Court considered that argument, but what they said was, you know, we certainly recognize that those cases are out there, and we recognize the void ab initio doctrine. However, they said, they agreed with the Rhodes argument that 2311(c) was a remedial statute, and as a remedial statute, it needed to be interpreted broadly, and it needed to be interpreted in a way that served the purpose of the statute. And in this case, they said, well, this was a, essentially in this specific bag pattern, a specific exception to the common law and an exception to the judicially created general principle that a building permit issued in violation of an applicable zoning ordinance is void. And they cited the Tavardick versus Powhatan Village Homeowner Association case for the abrogation of common law and following the manifest intent of the General Assembly. Most of our technical arguments were essentially wiped out by that one statement. And they said, you know, because it's remedial, then void ab initio doesn't count. Because it's void ab initio, we need to read this exception broadly. And so it pretty much wiped out most of our really good arguments, Chris.
Yeah, I think something's kind of a higher-level issue for you to consider so you better understand that where we were coming from was, and what you're looking at now is the Supreme Court's opinion. But when we started this analysis, you see at the beginning of your outline here, you know, the statutory language we're talking about is in 15.2-2311, which is an otherwise fairly unremarkable portion of the code detailing the mechanism by which an aggrieved party appeals a BZA decision. And our position had been, again, from a high-level perspective, this isn't a, judging from the language of the provision and where it's located in the code, we didn't see this as an attempt to make, to have a massive overhaul of Virginia law concerning some of these fundamental doctrines like the void ab initio doctrine. We had said, we view this as a fairly narrow provision, which addresses circumstances where a zoning administrator is acting within his authority under 2286a4. And under that provision, a zoning administrator is empowered, as I'm sure all of you know, to make interpretations of the zoning ordinance. And we said, okay, well, in circumstances where a zoning administrator is properly acting under that authority, and he's presented with an issue that could legitimately go either way, and he uses his judgment, he looks at the facts, looks at the law, makes a determination saying, I think the zoning ordinance should be interpreted in this fashion. Then, after these circumstances are met, he can't then go change his decision. Under the law prior to 2311(c), it would have been theoretically possible for a zoning administrator to make that interpretation and then have a change of heart sometime later and say, you know what, I think I got that wrong. I'm going to reverse myself, kind of like the judge did in our case, and issue a different interpretation, which of course would befall a hardship on the property owner, who we all admit has a right to have some kind of certainty in determinations that he receives from, he or she receives from the locality. But what the Rhodes is, and ultimately the court concluded, was that this provision was intended to be much broader, and that it was a legislative remedy to protect property owners in almost any conceivable circumstance after they get a determination from the locality. And because of the broad view that the court took of that, what we think could be a relatively simple provision, what you have now is a, what they describe as here in headnote seven of the court's decision, a legislatively mandated limited exception to the judicially created general principle that building permits are issued in violation of the zoning ordinance are void. That is, heretofore, a fairly foundational legal tenet in the sphere we operate in. And the court has said 2311(c) is intended to abrogate that and say, you know, even if you get a decision that would have been void because it is not the result of an action taken under 2284, it's not an interpretation, it is, you know, quite simply a mistake, it doesn't matter. The legislature intended to override the void ab initio doctrine, invest in that mistake all of the authority that somebody who had applied for a variance or something would otherwise have. So what we came down with was two very different interpretations of the breadth of 2311(c), and ultimately, the court's decision in this case, the Supreme Court's decision, went with the broad view. And as Andrew was saying, because they viewed this as a broad legislative fix with a remedial intent, it, that knocked down almost all our pins, because once they say that the legislature intended this to be remedial and to protect property owners, it's an easy response to every argument we make about, you know, foundational law existing previously.
Well, the next issue that was before the Supreme Court was whether or not 2311(c) did not apply because the certificate, the zoning permit attached to the building permit, was not a determination within the meaning of the statute. That argument was made for several reasons. One is, up until the point that this case had been decided, there had been eight, nine, 10 cases in which landowners tried to argue 2311(c), and in every single one of those cases, the Supreme Court had said, no, 2311(c) does not apply because that thing you're relying on is not an order requirement decision or determination. And they had lots of different reasons why each one was, or, you know, was not a order requirement decision termination. Our argument on it was essentially that in this case, the zoning administrator had not actually read the thing he signed, so he didn't make a determination. That was pretty foundational. And second of all, he didn't actually make a determination on the face of this that this garage applied to the actual facts, i.e. a one-story principal dwelling, should be approved, notwithstanding the fact it's in violation of the law. There is language that would, that supported our argument out of the Norfolk 102 case, in which there was a similar type of zoning permit. That one was attached, I believe, to a business license as opposed to a building permit. But both are permits that are approved and go get sort of passed through the zoning office to approve the land use before it goes forward with a business license or a building permit.
Yeah, and I can give a little more detail on Norfolk 102 because it was, in our briefing to the Supreme Court, we relied pretty heavily on that case, and the Supreme Court addressed that case in their opinion, because it was the immediately preceding case on this issue. It was from 2013, and it was prior to this decision, the latest expression of where the court's head with that on this matter. And Norfolk 102 is interesting because from our perspective, it was factually fairly analogous. And briefly, just so you can kind of understand, in that case, there were two bars in the Waterside Development in Norfolk, Bar Norfolk, and Have a Nice Day Cafe, and they, somewhat similarly to our client in this case, it was a series of unfortunate events for those bar owners. And what happened there was, when they started doing business in 1999, they were selling alcohol, obviously, they're both bars, and they were unknowingly doing it illegally because at that time, the alcohol sales required a special exception. And because of the way that the zoning map was drawn, they were actually located in an annex to the Waterside Development that wasn't covered by the special exception that permitted alcohol sales. So unbeknownst to anybody, they were selling alcohol illegally. And unbeknownst to anybody includes the zoning administrator at the time. He issued them what, a document that he called a cash or receipt, but also bore an inscription called zoning clearance certificate and zoning clearance for business license. So in 1999, they got this document that said, you have a zoning clearance certificate and a zoning clearance for business license. a zoning clearance for business license, the implication being, you meet the zoning requirements. That was not correct. They were in violation of the zoning ordinance by selling alcohol. All of this got fixed soon thereafter because a blanket permit was issued that allowed everybody in Waterside to sell alcohol. So it was kind of mooted by this blanket permit. But in 2009, a decade later, the blanket permit was revoked and a new zoning administrator, a new staff in the locality zoning department, noticed the error and sent an NOV to both the bar and the cafe and said, hey, you know, I have bad news for you. You know, you were never legally allowed to sell alcohol. And so now that the blanket permit's been revoked, you can't do so. And so the bar and the cafe filed a complaint with the same allegations that we received in the Rhodes case. And they said, hey, we have this cash receipt document that says that we have a zoning clearance certificate and a zoning clearance for business license. So they argued both under 2307 that they had a vested right and under 2311C that the locality had made a determination that they were in zoning compliance and they were selling alcohol at the time. And everybody knew that this place called the Bar Norfolk was a bar and was going to be selling alcohol. And so they argued that 2311C has stopped the locality from changing its position. The court in that case, again in 2013, went another direction. And they said that cash receipt document is not a determination or decision. And one of the things that they based that decision on was their conclusion that, and actually, what I can do-
Well, at the very bottom of that page that we just had up-
Yeah.
It has the language there.
Well, I've actually got, I've got a bigger excerpt here so that everyone can read it along with me, should you, should you wish to do so. And this is from our brief to the Supreme Court. So, you know, everything we're showing you is a public document. This is an excerpt here, that block language from the court's ruling in the Norfolk 102 case. And the court concluded that the cash receipt was not a specific determination by the zoning administrator or any other city official, that either of these businesses, that's the bar and the cafe, could use their respective premises in a manner not otherwise allowed under the zoning ordinances in effect at the time. In other words, those documents did not reflect a determination that either Bar Norfolk or the cafe could operate as an entertainment establishment and provide alcohol beverages on premises, for on premises consumption contrary to the terms of the then controlling ordinance. The court said, in short, that document you have, that cash receipt, doesn't say you are approved to sell alcohol, you are approved to operate as an entertainment establishment. It was a much smaller perfunctory zoning compliance, check the box here document. We took this case and we said, well, we are very similar. We have a document, an application that was submitted to the zoning administrator and he checked in a box below, yes, you are, you are in compliance certified. And the document itself says, I want to build a two-story garage. But again, it doesn't say anything in the document about the height of the primary structure. So in our case, the person appealing decision is relying on the personal knowledge of the zoning administrator that the primary structure is one story. And in the Norfolk 102 case, again, everyone was, the applicant there were saying, well, maybe the document doesn't say that you can sell alcohol, but it defies logic for someone to assume that a place called Bar Norfolk isn't going to be selling alcohol and isn't going to be operating as an entertainment establishment. But in the Norfolk 102 case, the Supreme Court said, no, the document itself doesn't reflect a determination that either one of them is going to be selling alcohol beverages, therefore it's not a order requirement decision or determination. Therefore, you don't qualify for protection under 2311C. In the Rhodes case, the court went in a different direction. They said, you're a certificate of compliance, some, the line is somewhere between that document in Norfolk 102 and the document that we've shown you in this case because they said that this certificate was sufficient to qualify.
Yeah, I mean, Norfolk 102 Supreme Court opinion was applying the language out of Goianaga, which is really the first case to ever consider a 2311C claim, Supreme Court. And it said that the, in Norfolk 102, and as in Goianaga, the zoning administrator had not issued a specific determination the landowner could use the property in a way not otherwise permitted by the ordinance. Now, in my view, like Chris said, I mean, it says bar on the face of it. So it plainly was approving a bar. But in that case, they read it fairly narrowly, which we argued, it should be read narrowly as an exception to the law, allowing something that otherwise would actually be a misdemeanor in Richmond County. All right, the third issue that was in front of the Supreme Court was the, was for me, the hardest one to really understand. And, because from the very beginning, we understood that the first two were really subject to court interpretation. And we knew that there was someday going to be a 2311C case that said, yes, this is what the General Assembly meant. And we certainly knew that these were not good facts. And sometimes, as sometimes lawyers will say, bad facts sometimes make bad law. But in this case, the third issue involved around whether or not this 2311C vesting or estoppel of the zoning administrator applied to the Board of Supervisors, which is a, a party that is not named in 2311C anywhere. In fact, is an elected body, it's a public body. And in fact, it, our argument really was framed by the, by the Falls Church case, in which case, they said, in that case, not only was it a, you know, a mere interpretation, therefore it wasn't a decision determination, the Supreme Court went on in the James versus Falls Church case and said, in addition, they're trying to stop the planning commission, which is not a zoning administrator or an administrator carrying out the duties of interpreting the zoning, it's neither. And our argument was, the governing body here is neither also. It's certainly not a zoning administrator, it's not an administrator, in fact, it's a legislative body. And so therefore, even if the estoppel applies, it doesn't apply to the governing body. As a result of this, below in the trial court, we had actually filed a second lawsuit. Of course, the one lawsuit was the Rhodes appeal of the BZA decision. The second one was a declaratory judgment action by the Board of Supervisors to seek a, an injunction against the Rhodes for the admitted zoning violation at that point in time. And so those two cases were considered together. So this third issue really goes to whether or not our declaratory judgment should get an injunction, notwithstanding what the Supreme Court up to this point in its opinion had determined was an appropriate estoppel under 2311C.
Yeah, and one thing to point out, just so you understand the rationale for our argument here, is that, you know, there are these principles called the canons of statutory interpretation. And they have various rules when we are doing this exercise of reading the law as written by the General Assembly and trying to apply it to the real world. And obviously, that can be challenging sometimes. But one of those canons is, you have to read the plain meaning of the statute. And you have to read the text that's there and give to the fullest extent possible purpose and import to every word that's used by the General Assembly. And when we were reading 2311C, which I brought back up on your screen, the introduction says, "In no event shall a written order, requirement, decision, or determination made by a zoning administrator or other administrative official, officer, be subject to change, modification, or reversal," and this was what I would bold, "by any zoning administrator or other administrative officer." So when we brought our own lawsuit, to Andrew's point, we were saying, this, the provision we're talking about says, change, modification, or reversal by any zoning administrator or administrative officer. So the only people that this statute is saying you are precluded from acting is the zoning administrator or another officer, had the General Assembly, we argued, intended that to be a broader prohibition and incorporate the planning commission or the board-
Or governing bodies.
They could have simply deleted that language and said, it's just not subject to change, modification, or reversal. Delete the modifier there and move on to the rest of the language. And we said, because of this canon of statutory interpretation, you need to give meaning to every word used. And obviously, we thought that this language was inserted to limit the scope of the prohibition. But-
And that, and that argument arose directly out of the James versus City of Falls Church case, that essentially said that. James actually had two alternate holdings essentially. One was the fact that the zoning administrator had issued a quote, "mere interpretation" unquote, and thus it wasn't a actual determination that triggers either an appeal to BZA or potential estoppel under 2311C. But the other ruling was that, when you get right down to it, the applicant before the planning commission in the James case was arguing that because of this prior determination, as he called it, that the planning commission should be stuck with it, that it didn't have an independent authority or ability to look into the meaning of the zoning. And essentially, the planning commission was stuck. And the alternate ruling, but from the Supreme Court, was, you know, look, even if 2311C applied, it can't apply to the planning commission, which has its own authority to make decisions about what the law is in approving site plans and plans of development. We argued that also here and said, well, here, the governing body has the ability, if they're aggrieved, to come and bring declaratory judgment actions or appeals of BZA decisions or do a bunch of other things. And there's plenty of case law out there to say that they have that ability to do that. And so we argued that they have an independent authority and ability to come in and try to enforce their zoning ordinance if the zoning administrator can't. The Supreme Court, however, said, no. The zoning administrator, one, is in fact, the agent for the Board of Supervisors. And there's no question that that's the case. If you read 2286, that's what it says. Is the agent of the Board of Supervising Body, the zoning administrator is acting as their agent. So it's a representative. So it was sort of a little bit of a, you know, sort of a caveat emptor kind of thing where, you know, respondiat superior is the word I was looking for.
Right.
Sort of like a, well, because you work for me, everything you do, I'm kind of stuck with. They didn't actually mention respondiat superior, but that's kind of what their theory is. And they, but their major argument, it kind of fell back to the remedial issue that we were talking about earlier. And that is, look, if we, and this is actually one of the questions they asked me during the oral argument, so I knew it was on their minds. And that is, well, if we in fact, stop the zoning administrator, but we actually allow a Board of Supervisors or a city council to come later and file a DEC action to overturn these things, what protection is afforded the landowner under 2311C? And then they called it scant.
Right, and that's a legitimate concern. And we, I think we acknowledge that certainly, yes. I mean, reading it that way would, would make this, what we argue is already a narrow statute, very, very narrow. But there are, there are laws out there that say, notwithstanding what you think the purpose of the statute is, you have to apply it as written. And so we thought that language in there just limited, notwithstanding the fact that, yeah, it might result in a fairly scant assistance to property owners, but-
Well, you know, our view was, it might actually provide scant remedy, but our argument was consistent with the void ab initio doctrine-
Right.
Existing, it was consistent with James versus City of Falls Church. It was consistent with Norfolk 102. It was consistent with all the law that had been handed down that was related to this topic. The Supreme Court wanted to go a different way and use the remedial nature of it to kind of sweep all those arguments away and in fact, to say that it did what the Rhodes wanted it to do. And of course, I've been concerned for a long time with the Supreme Court's use of the term vested right when they talk about 2311C. Because if you read 2311C, it doesn't actually mention vested right anywhere. It says essentially in 2311C that the zoning administrator is prevented from changing their determination. While I guess that's vested from a certain perspective, is that a vested property right? Or is that just really, truly vesting a right not to have the zoning administrator change their mind? I always argued the latter. And, you know, we always argued that 2311C should be interpreted narrowly. And the argument there is, one, the Supreme Court had always done that. And then, two, you have essentially something that's saying, the law as written doesn't apply. Well, the law as written doesn't apply should be interpreted narrowly, especially in circumstances like this, where under the Richmond County zoning ordinance, the Rhodes actually committed a misdemeanor, arguably. Obviously, once 2311C was decided the way they was by the Supreme Court, that issue was also wiped away.
Yeah, and I think the Supreme Court's decision, you know, we don't want to give any of you the impression that we are bemoaning it. I think that because they went, the premise that they adopted was a broad view of the purpose of 2311C and, you know, focusing on its remedial intent, their conclusions flowed logically from that premise. And I think that it was a well reasoned, well articulated decision. It's just, it started from a different point than we did. You know, if you accepted our premises, the narrow statute, and that it didn't abrogate these other void ab initio doctrines and things like that, then, then our conclusions would have flowed from that. But because they started from a different starting point, I think it's a well articulated decision and it comes to conclusions that make logical sense. And there's, regardless, I think we all admitted, Andrew, that there's benefit to localities. Even though this does create risks, at least now they're known risks. And you can use this decision to guide your future behavior. There's more certainty, which I think is the point of 2311C in the first place, but now we have much more certainty as to what exactly that language does and how exactly it limits you or impacts you as a zoning official.
Well, turning to sort of what I call the takeaways. The first takeaway is, void ab initio is not a defense to a valid 2311C claim. That issue was out there. In fact, none of the 2311C cases that had been decided from 1994, 1995, when it was first put into then title 15.1 until 2017, none of those cases had ever mentioned the void ab initio doctrine. We argued that it hadn't gone away and in fact, that it had been cited just recently in the EMAC zoning decision in Hanover. And while that wasn't a 2311C case, certainly the doctrine is alive and well. It's the flip side of the Dillon Rule. If you violate the Dillon Rule, it's void ab initio. That's just one of the rules. What we learned was, because this is a remedial statute, then the void ab initio doctrine does not apply and you can't rely upon the void ab initio doctrine. And it doesn't matter that the zoning administrator acted in an unauthorized fashion. Essentially, the zoning administrator, the governing body and the locality are stuck with the results of that action. And of course, most of y'all listening here today on the webinar are zoning administrators or work in a zoning office. And so it's something that you need to take to heart, to realize that when you sign a piece of paper or send something in writing that purports to do a zoning approval that is final in any way, that it really is final. And after 60 days, there may be no way, even the governing body, even your boss, either the public, the neighbor, as in this case, who are clearly aggrieved, to do anything about it. And so void ab initio no longer a defense to a 2311C claim.
Right. In other words, the court has said, we are changing the void ab initio doctrine, or the legislature changed the void ab initio doctrine by enacting 2311C. It is, it does not apply to orders, requirements, decisions, determinations that meet the requirements of 2311C. Those are not void, even if they would otherwise be determined void as outside of the authority of the zoning administrator. They are now valid.
All right, number two, be aware of what is a final approval and sets up a 2311C vesting potentially. You know, like I said, the Supreme Court case in the past, it said, no, that's not a determination, it's a mere interpretation. That's not a determination, it's a mere opinion. It had a number of different ways to do it. The crucible case, for example, was another one, Goianaga. But be aware, when you're signing off on things like certificates of compliance, zoning permits, and the like, in addition to a formal zoning determination, that there may very well be 2311C vesting at stake. And so be aware, what is final and what's not. The Supreme Court was applying, in the Rhodes case, something that they said was final. And there's no doubt that it was. It was the final approval by the zoning administrator of this two-story garage and then they went off and built it. So I guess our suggestion is, be aware of what's final and what's not. And if it's not final, say it's not final. If it is final, say it's final. And just set up an internal dynamic so that when things are written and are approved and they are meant to be final, that there is an internal ability to trigger those things as final and treat them as such. And those things that aren't, simply say, this is not final. If you want a final determination, you can write us a letter and request one or whatever your response to that is. That may apply in some cases better than others, but at least that's one way to try to respond to the Rhodes case.
Right. And the statute does have, Andrew and I have discussed this, it has a 60-day lookback window. And so that's, that's the only escape valve that you've got. We understand that many of you are overworked and there's not enough time in the day to get everything that you've got on your desk to do, done quickly and efficiently. and efficiently. And mistakes can be made. The statute as written right now does have a 60-day look back window. So if you were able to catch something or review something that you felt wasn't given a thorough analysis, you can revoke it within 60 days. Um, it's after 60 days that the time goes up. So had the zoning administrator in this case, the Rhodes case, noticed the error within 60 days, none of this would have happened. Um, but after 60 days, it's final.
Uh, the third takeaway is that 2311C, which after the James versus Falls Church case, most lawyers thought, well, it only applies to zoning administrators and administrators that are carrying out tasks in the zoning ordinance. It does not apply to the planning commission. It doesn't apply to public bodies. And, uh, we thought that that case was on point and, um, the Supreme Court said, no. Um, you know, it's, uh, it applies to the governing body at the very least. Uh, I guess someday there might be another case involved, the planning commission, and then we'll determine which case wins. Uh, the Rhodes case, which says that it applies outside of the zoning administrator context, or does it, uh, is, does James control and the planning commission actually has authority and is neither a zoning administrator or an administrator of the zoning ordinance? Um, you know, we don't know. But we do know that 2311C is much more serious and much broader than it once was. And arising out of that is something that's not in your materials. And that is that not only, uh, does it rise, uh, for a broader estoppel, broader vested right than is expressly stated in 2311C, it also allows that even if a governing body changes the law subsequently to a written determination under this, that there are vested rights to be had. Uh, in 15.2-2307, uh, you may recall that there used to be seven express significant affirmative governmental acts that can vest rights. Uh, the, the General Assembly added an eighth, which is zoning administrator 2311C determinations, uh, and under certain circumstances can apply also. So not only is it broader in the context of applying to governing bodies and others, it also is broader in that it can apply vested rights more broadly. Last one, and then we will take questions, well, not the last one, the fourth one, is that, um, and I think I may have covered this earlier, know when 2311C applies and when it doesn't include the appeal language under 2311A when it's a final understanding. Because there's no reason from a statutory construction standpoint that a different definition of order requirement, decision, termination should apply in 2311C than order requirement, decision, termination in 2311A, which as Chris mentioned earlier, is the essentially how you appeal a BCA case. Uh, and so if it's an order requirement, decision, termination, say so and understand you may be headed to the BCA, or say it's not, and then you're not headed to the BCA, but you're also not headed to any potential vesting. Um, two more takeaways that aren't in your materials, and that is that one of our fears is sort of a, you know, slippery slope, if you will, on this is what happens if a landowner is aware of the fact that their zoning doesn't allow their accessory structure in this case, for example, or some other use. And they say, well, let's just take a shot. I think the zoning administrators overworked and they're really busy. Maybe they're short-staffed this week because somebody just quit. Uh, let's go ahead and apply now and see if we can get by with it. Um, we don't know that was the facts of this case. We didn't really, we were not able to establish that type of fact in the Rhodes case. But it's a potential and it's a potential fear that essentially a bad landowner could potentially say, well, I'm not going to get a variance, I'm not going to get a permit, but the zoning administrator could make a mistake. And if they do, then I get the same as result as a variance or an approval, even though the statute doesn't allow it, the zoning administrator doesn't allow it.
Yeah. I mean, that, that's one of the interesting scenarios that we were toying with just when we were trying to rationalize how the statute should work. Again, in the Rhodes case, we have no evidence that this was anything other than a mistake by both sides. Everybody messed up. Uh, you know, the, the zoning administrator signed something that he hadn't fully reviewed, uh, and then the applicant submitted an application for something that was plainly not allowed under the zoning ordinance. But as best as the evidence all bore out, and I, and I think this is probably, probably true, everyone just made a mistake, which is fine. Um, the, the, the provision does say that in the events of fraud or malfeasance, if you, if you obtain your order requirement, decision or determination through malfeasance, um, and I, I thought there was some fraud language in there, but certainly that would fall, oh yeah, officer threw fraud, then obviously wouldn't apply. So if you could prove that someone was trying to trick you or was trying to, um, get an application through, um, without your knowledge, there's an argument that's fraud, but that is an incredibly hard thing to prove. Um, and so the, the question is, I, you know, using that as defense is unwieldy at best and would, would be challenging. So really the, the policy question is, um, when these, will this incentivize more applications to be filed that may be inherently problematic, but people just don't really have an incentive to thoroughly vet them because if they get approved and 60 days goes by, they've got a vested right. Um,
And let me, let me one up that, Chris, and the last point, and then we'll take some questions. And, uh, you know, that was sort of the what happens if there's a bad landowner scenario. What if there's a bad zoning administrator scenario?
Right.
Now presumably, if you can prove that the zoning administrator knew that they were acting badly, then you could prove malfeasance. Uh, but what if the, it, it's not that clear? Uh, what if there's evidence of good faith on the zoning, just an error? Or what if there is, you know, perhaps a, you know, a sort of a conspiracy of sorts within the government itself, that we're going to start approving things that aren't allowed in the law, just because we all want them to happen without going through a variance procedure or a zoning amendment that would otherwise require notice at a public hearing? Uh, I can see scenarios under which there are bad government officials potentially involved in sort of allowing things to happen without the law being followed to allow them to happen. And that is to me, as much of a concern as the malfeasance, uh, as much of a concern as the bad landowner scenario we gave earlier.
Right.
Okay. We will stop now and we will take questions.
Yeah.
And, uh, I think Sarah is going to read the questions to us if there are any.
Yes, we have quite a few coming in. So I am going to start here at the top with a question from Laura wanting to know, given the determination that the roads weren't responsible to undo their work, but isn't there a way that the city or town could correct the problem by paying the cost of correcting or undoing the physical changes that prompted the lawsuit in the first place? That way the homeowner can be made more or less whole and the neighbors could have gotten the error corrected.
Well, that's a brilliant idea and we tried that in settlement of this case. Uh, you know, we, you know, we, we were willing to pay some of these costs. I don't know if we ever got to 100% of the project cost, but a substantial portion. And, um, you know, we just, it's, it's a good idea and I, I recommend trying it. But that's not a legal solution. It's more of a settlement.
Right. That's, the parties are always entitled to try and find a settlement. And if, um, if, if they were willing to do that, that's certainly an option, um, given, you know, all the appropriate approvals. But in, in that situation, especially now after Rhodes, the property owner would hold all the car because it's up to them as to whether they want to keep their building because they have vested right in it, or whether they want to negotiate with the locality, um, to have it removed and have their damages alleviated through monetary compensation or something like that.
Yep.
But it would, it would certainly be up to the parties and, and that type of negotiation, uh, the property owner, assuming they got a vested right, would have all the negotiation power.
Oh, thank you. The next question also from Laura is can you explain what is meant by the remedial nature of the statute?
Um, yes, the Supreme Court. Well, what it means is plumbing the depths of the language to determine what the General Assembly's intent was in the language and then applying it broadly to accomplish that intent. And you remember during our presentation, we mentioned a couple of things where the General Assembly, excuse me, the Supreme Court used the remedial nature of it to kind of overcome our argument. Uh, you know, one was whether it, the void ab initio doctrine applied. And the other one was whether it should be broadly applied to the governing body.
Yeah. I mean, and, and just backing out, you can see I brought the opinion up, but, um, what the, the law says that when you have a statute that has a remedial purpose, the courts, including the Supreme Court, are instructed to interpret it very broadly to achieve that purpose. So, you know, when it's a close call like this case, um, if it's a remedial statute, the call goes in favor of the property owner because they're the ones that, that are intended to be the beneficiaries of this protection. Um, so you see the language there. Um, the remedial statutes are those that provide protections to those otherwise not in position to effectively defend themselves. And what the Supreme Court concluded in this case was, well, property owner who gets something from the locality really doesn't have any way to defend themselves if, uh, the locality changes their mind later. And so we want to remedy that. So we're going to enact 2311C. And that's what the Supreme Court has, has ruled. And that's what the law is right now.
Yep. And, uh, of course, you know, we tried to argue the public policy on the other side. And that is, you know, who's protecting the rights of the neighbors to have the law enforced as it's written?
Right.
Uh, who are facing a towering garage on their property line.
Right. And the, the doubly troubling situation there is when one of these determinations comes through, um, the appeal language in there says you have to appeal within 30 days. Um, but that only goes to the person who applied for it. The neighbors don't generally aren't privy to this.
Yeah. There, there's a whole interesting area of law about who is bound by a decision of the zoning administrator and, uh, not, not, not something we can go into today. All right. Next question.
All right. This is from Young. Wants to know why the period for changing the decision is 60 days and not 90 days, for example?
I, we don't know.
That, that one you have to ask the General Assembly. We don't know why they chose that. But it's 60 days.
All righty. Um, next question from Mary. Could an affected neighbor sue the locality for damages from the error?
Well, speaking as the county attorney, of course not. Uh, I mean, uh, well, first of all, uh, believe me, you know, that was a question that we of course, uh, were, were weighing during this, this thing. Um, you know, it really comes down to the fact that this was a negligent determination. I mean, the Supreme Court has called a determination, so it is one.
Yeah.
It was a negligent determination by the zoning administrator and local government officials and, and counties can't be sued for negligence. So we have sovereign immunity if nothing else. And plainly, even if this were a city or a town, um, zoning is quintessentially governmental in nature and not proprietary. And so even in a city or town, we believe there would be, uh, sovereign immunity for this.
All right. Um, the next question is why wasn't the zoning administrator's actions considered malfeasance, thus permitting the reversal and cited signing the form that he didn't fully read?
Well, that comes down to the difference between misfeasance and malfeasance. If you look up the two terms, misfeasance describes pretty effectively what happened here. It was something that wasn't authorized by law and he didn't do it intentionally.
It was a mistake.
He made a mistake. Okay? That's misfeasance. Uh, malfeasance is when someone knows that they are unauthorized and does it anyway with sort of, you know, mens rea, I mean, and a criminal intent basically, or, or inappropriate intent. In this case, the zoning administrator simply hadn't, didn't read it before he signed it. It was just a, a mess up. That's all.
Yeah. It's a great question, Evie. That, that was an issue that, that the parties litigated about, I think, um, at the lower court. I don't think we raised it on appeal. But, um, you know, again, the problem there is it, it's a matter of intent and, um, proving intent is always challenging. So
And especially in this case, when we took the position accurately, that it wasn't, you know, some evil intent of the zoning administrator, it was a mere error.
So that, that exception, um, in our opinion, is going to be difficult to make use of because in order to get out from under 2311C, under that malfeasance and fraud exception, you're going to have to show intent by somebody and that's very hard to prove.
And then there's the other practical thing is, uh, you know, zoning administrator, if they really did commit malfeasance, uh, that has penalties that have far reaching implications far outside of 2311C. And
Yeah.
I won't say much more about it.
Right. But everybody in this case, again, everyone admitted, and I think it was essentially stipulated that there were just mistakes on both sides. You know, everyone just made a mistake. Um, so what do we do about it? Supreme Court said, we're going to, because remedial statute, we're going to err on the side of the property owner.
Next question?
All right. This comes from Paula. Are there plans for your firm to change the legislation?
You know, my firm does some lobbying, but we don't have a client that hired us to do this lobbying. Uh, if APA or VAA, you know, some, some organization, you know, VML or VACO wish to, uh, promote legislation, uh, you know, we certainly would be glad to speak in favor of it. You know, we see that there is a, you know, we respect the decision of the zoning, uh, Supreme Court, clearly. But we do believe that, that the decision leans very heavily in favor of the individual property owners' right here and ignores some very far reaching implications of policy that perhaps weren't weighed by the General Assembly when this was adopted originally in 1995. And it's taken until 2017 to get a case where it actually showed the far reaching implications of what the General Assembly has said. And so revisiting it, we think would be probably a good idea. Uh, because there are, like I said, where, you know, where do, you know, the roads' rights end and where does the adjacent property owner's right to have the law enforced or changed appropriately after a public hearing and a notice to an adjacent property owner? Uh, you know, those rights, both of them have rights. Uh, this case comes down squarely on the side of the individual property owner without, you know, much consideration of the other.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, it's, as you all know, I'm sure zoning is a delicate balance between individual rights and the community's interest. And, um, the scales have been adjusted just a little bit by this decision.
Yep. Next question?
All right. Uh, so I have three more questions. Do you guys want to do that in, in the questions? Do you want to keep going if they keep coming in?
I, I'm, I'm happy to do three and we'll call it a day.
Okay. Three then. Okay. So the next question, um, from Jared, and this might be more of a comment. It seems to me that it's a terrible ruling for the very reason Andrew posed. A zoning administrator should not have that much power to overrule or change or reverse their own ordinance that, and have that be legally upheld. Their duty is to uphold the zoning ordinance.
Well, I agree. And it certainly puts the zoning administrator, in addition to all of the things I've said, in a very awkward position if the governing body or the county administrator or the community at large are unhappy with a erroneous zoning decision. And, uh, it's really puts them in unfair circumstances.
Yeah.
All right.
Can't make mistakes.
Yeah. Next to the last question.
Okay. Do you think this would be considered differently if the zoning mistake was related to the floodplain overlay districts in which safety could be an issue? Curious about the ramifications of this for that specifically because FEMA tends to think that localities can require any violation to be corrected regardless of when or how it occurred as part of that community's national flood insurance program compliance?
Honestly, I've never really considered 2311C in the context of that. And so I kind of hesitate to give any kind of thoughts about it. Certainly didn't come up in this case because it was, you know, a pure zoning, uh, use, uh, kind of case as opposed to the floodplain component of the zoning ordinance. Um, so I don't have much to say about it, Chris.
Yeah. No, that's, that's, that's a very interesting question. But you, you know, when you talk about the confluence of different bodies of law, um, and figuring out which one is going to win the day, um, that's, that would require a lot of analysis. I think it's a great, great issue.
It is, it is a great issue. And, you know, I think the federal government sometimes thinks local governments can do a lot more than they really can do.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, ultimately, uh, I think that, uh, that's the kind of issue that if ever were brought up in a federal context, might be something that the federal court might want to submit to the Virginia Supreme Court for, uh, input.
But I mean, I think that the Supreme Court has made their position fairly clear on this statute now. And, and if, if the requirements are met, it's, it's a thing decided, it's a vested right. Uh, and so, um, you know, if there's, if there's a presumption that the locality has some kind of authority to change that decision, the Supreme Court's decision in this case has, has eliminated that presumption. They cannot change it.
All right. Last question.
Um, so it's kind of a two-part question. How do you think the Supreme Court would have ruled if the building had not been fully constructed and the permit had been approved, but the improvements had not been completed? And is it possible to appeal this to the US Supreme Court or is the Virginia Supreme Court the highest court?
Well, this is, the Virginia Supreme Court is the final court, and this was a final decision. As, uh, as some folks have said, sometimes the Supreme Court is, uh, not last because they're right, they're right because they're last. Um, I used to be uncomfortable with saying that, but then actually I heard a justice one time say it. So I feel more comfortable saying it. Um, so it is final and there's no further appeals. Um, what was the other part of that question?
Whether if they were a little earlier on in the, in the construction process, um, it would apply. I mean, there is, the statute requires good faith reliance and, you know, materially change their position.
Substantial stones and all.
Um, so, you know, if they hadn't really changed their position at all, if they hadn't spent any money, um, in this case, the, the roads had, had any money, in this case, the, the roads had spent a significant sum of money and built this thing. So obviously they had changed their position, but if the facts were different and it was still in the planning stage and they hadn't spent as much, maybe it wouldn't apply yet. But that is also fairly, I, I think that, that, I think most courts, again, given the, the premise that the Supreme Court has adopted, which is this is a remedial statute and has been, has to be interpreted broadly to achieve that remedial purpose, I think they're going to, I think they're going to interpret that language pretty broadly as a result and say material change, any, any noticeable change. So if they had, if they were, like you said, partway through construction, I think that'd still be material.
I, I think, I think that's probably correct. There is a statute out there that allows, you know, an aggrieved party to challenge an issue with a building permit. That might be a little broader, but honestly, I've never had that statute apply when 2311(c) also applied. And given the very clear language of the Supreme Court saying that 2311(c) was an exception to avoid building permit, I don't know if that would really help you very much, but it might be worth looking at. Well, thank you all very much for attending today and Chris and I are happy to assist you all on into the future if your localities ever need help in the zoning and planning area. And we hope to work with Sarah and the APA on doing some more webinars in the future.
Thank you.
Awesome, yes. Thank you, everyone, for giving us your lunch hour and thank you, Andrew and Chris, for volunteering your time today. I think this was a very informative webinar and seemed like there were lots of questions, so look out for that follow-up email if you would like your contact info. And don't forget to log your legal CM credit. And remember to check out our website, virginia.planning.org to sign up for future webinars. And we will see you next time. Have a great afternoon.